And good evening from downtown Covington at Link NKY World Headquarters. I'm Michael Monks alongside Mark Payne, Lincoln KY Politics and Government Reporter. This is our continuing coverage of primary election 2022. Tonight's forum features the Republican candidates for House District 69. Incumbent State Representative Adam Koenig, Representative Koenig, welcome. Thank you for being with us this evening. And Erlanger City Councilman Steve Doan, Councilman Doan, thank you for being with us as well. As you have watched over the past several days, our live forums feature questions from Mark Payne and I to the quest, to the candidates who will then have one minute to respond. We start with opening statements and then proceed through a series of questions. Should one candidate mention the other candidate? We will offer that mentioned candidate the opportunity for a 30 second rebuttal. So we will have opening statements, few questions, and then closing statements. And again, full coverage of election 2022 is available at link NKY.com. We have articles about all of the races taking place on May 17th, Primary Election Day at Lincoln KY.com, as well as op ed submitted by the candidates themselves. So you can hear why they are running in their own words. And so we will start with our opening statements this evening with State Representative Adam Koenig, the incumbent Republican of House District 69. Representative Koenig, you have one minute to start.
Thanks, Michael, and thanks to Link NKY for doing this, not just for this race, but for all the races across Northern Kentucky. It's been my honor truly to represent the people of the 69th District in Frankfurt for 16 years. And it's a tale of two careers almost first 10 years in Frankfurt under a Democratic House, fighting the first Beshear administration and Greg Stumbo and the Democrats that ran things. And since then, six years that we've been in charge, we've done a great deal of things to improve Kentucky, pass conservative legislation like right to work, prevailing wage repeal, pro-life legislation, tax reform, workers' compensation reform, election reform, public assistance reform, school choice, putting our pension systems on solid footing. And the list goes on and on, but we've done quite a bit. Some of those things I've been the sponsor of, some of whom I've just been in the Army marching along and proud of it. So I would like the ability to represent the citizens for another two years because I'm a proven conservative with proven results.
Thank you, Representative Koenig. Erlanger City Councilman Steve Doan is a challenger in this race. Councilman Doan, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you, Michael. As previously stated, my name is Steve Doan, and I'm running for State House Representatives here in the 69th District. I grew up in Erlanger, where I still reside with my wife Chelsea and our nine-month-old son Wesley. Over the last 10 years of my career, I've served in all three branches of our government. As a state, from a statewide role as a general counsel in Governor Matt Bevins administration, as an attorney litigating on behalf of individuals in the judicial branch to protect their freedoms, as an Erlanger City Councilman here in the legislative branch. I'm running for one reason, because we need more voices in Frankfurt that will put the freedoms and liberties of people of corporate specialists. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Doan. And we will alternate between the two of you, who answers first, who answers second, and we'll do that throughout the evening. I've got to get my paper here to make sure I keep track of that throughout the duration of this forum. But now we'll get started with our questions. And I'll ask the first question, which will be addressed to Mr. Doan, and then we'll proceed to Mr. Koenig. And this is a question that we're asking of a lot of the legislative candidates in this year's forum series. What is a Republican? And it seems that that question is playing out in this particular race pretty heavily. So I'd like for each of you in our opening question here to take the opportunity of what is a Republican? Because we hear a lot about what a conservative is, or what a constitutional conservative is, or what a patriot is, or what a rhino is. And I would like to hear from each of you what that means to you. Mr. Doan, we'll start with you. You have one minute.
Simply, you know, a Republican first and foremost fights up the Constitution, and not just the federal Constitution, but the state Constitution as well. A Republican is also for less government, more freedom. I think that's probably the most critical issues that you would see come from a Republican. You could also say that a Republican would fight to lower taxes and make sure that there's more efficient government that does more with less. That's how I would see a Republican being categorized in today's department.
Thank you, Steve Doan. Adam Koenig, your response?
I mean, I agree with largely what was just said. But, you know, there's a big tent of Republicans in Frankfurt. There's several Eastern Kentucky representatives, and I think they would agree with this statement, with whom I agree on pro-life issues and basically nothing else. But we all are elected registered Republicans who come together to create a coalition to pass the things I just mentioned. And not everybody agrees all the time, and that's okay. There's a cadre of people who are convincing others to run in this race and other races that have a very narrow view. And if you don't subscribe to their narrow view, then you're not a Republican or a real Republican. And that is no, I mean, you can go that way, but you're not going to have a governing majority. You're not even going to have a majority. And I've learned in my 16 years in Frankfurt, if you're not in the majority, you don't get to make policy. So I view the Republican Party as a Big Ten of people who have different views, not all of them the same. I think I represent Northern Kentucky views extremely well, and I think the voters have shown that they agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. You're watching Link NKY's coverage of primary election 2022 in Northern Kentucky. This is the Republican Candidates Forum for House District 69. Our candidates are incumbent State Representative Adam Koenig and challenger Erlanger City Councilman Steve Doan. I'm Michael Monks alongside Mark Payne. I now yield the floor to my good friend, Mark Payne, for our next question. Mark, go ahead.
Thanks, Michael, and thanks to Councilman Doan and Representative Koenig for joining us tonight. My first question is going to be on election integrity. Secretary of State Michael Adams has repeatedly said we have some of the safest elections in the country. Furthermore, two bills, Senate Bill 216 and House Bill 564 were passed this legislative session, and they further strengthen election integrity in Kentucky. Would each of you talk about your stance on election integrity? And if familiar with either bill, discuss your thoughts on each. And Representative Koenig, we're going to start with you, and you have one minute.
Thanks, Mark. You know, I was happy to support both those bills, as well as a bill a few years ago to require voter ID at the polls. There's a lot of concerns out there, and we can always do better and be looking for ways to do better. And we did that this year with making sure that early voting was limited. We go back to the old rules around absentee ballots, no sending out of ballots to anyone and everyone, as occurred in other states. A host of things, paper ballots, paper trail, 24/7 surveillance on drop boxes and those ballots, just to make sure that everyone feels comfortable and we have a clear trail. And there was no credible accusations of widespread fraud in Kentucky. And yet, we took it upon ourselves to go forward. Michael Adams has done a great job. And, you know, I was proud to support those things and look forward to seeing them implemented and make sure that they're done properly.
And Steve Doan, the floor is yours. You have one minute.
You know, I believe a national and a local discussion into election integrity is a positive step forward, you know, for our state locally, as well as our nation. You know, over the last two national elections, both in 2016 and 2020, you know, both the Democrats and the Republicans claimed that the elections were rigged. So I think that this legislation that we passed is a good step forward in securing our elections. A big supporter of requiring IDs at the ballot and having a paper ballot backup would be a very good thing in our state. One thing that I think if you go further in is looking at new technologies to make sure that we are providing secure elections. I would be interested in office and looking into blockchain technology or a secure fraud-proof form of technology to make sure that there is no fraud and that we can actually verify everything going forward.
Thank you both. Primary Election Day is May 17. We've got information on where, when, and how to vote at link NKY.com, or please contact your local county clerk. They have all of the information available. There have been a lot of changes for folks on perhaps where you might go to vote, when you can vote, and all of the up-to-date information is available at Lincoln KY.com, but also through your local county clerks. On Tuesday, May 17, two weeks from yesterday, we will have live coverage of the results as they come in, live from right here in our studio, and also live reporters on the ground at the three county courthouses here in Northern Kentucky. So stand by for that coverage as well. Our next question comes from me, and this is about charter schools. We saw House Bill 9 pass the House and then the Senate. So it was approved by the General Assembly. It was vetoed by Governor Beshear. And then that piece of legislation was overridden by the General Assembly. It's related to charter schools. And Louisville and Northern Kentucky were targeted by this legislation for a charter pilot program, which means we may soon see a charter school in Northern Kentucky. We're not sure where, we're not sure when, but it does appear that it will be somewhere in the urban core of Northern Kentucky, either Covington or Newport, based on what we know at this point. I want to know from each of you, your thoughts on the charter school legislation, what you hope it accomplishes, or what concerns you might have about it. And for this question, we start with Steve Doan. Mr. Doan, you have one minute.
Let's start with begin this conversation by saying that I am a huge supporter of the Erlanger Elementary School District. You know, having attended that my entire educational career, K through 12. And then this year, you know, sponsoring the jerseys for the middle school soccer club. And I don't think Adam and I probably disagree too much on this issue. You know, I am for charter schools, for more competition in education. And we've always had competition here in this district. You know, you have a lot of kids that attend St. Henry, specifically in County of St. Henry. You have Erlanger Elementary School District, you have Dixie, and then you're going to have the Boone County School Districts. You've also had kids that go to Latin and Cup Cat, you know. So I think that more competition, having dollars follow students is always a good thing. And, you know, but I also think that we need to continue to support public education and make sure that our schools are properly funded and go away with a lot of those unfunded mandates and make sure that they get the proper funding.
Thank you, Steve Doan. Representative Koenig, your minute starts now.
Yeah, I was happy to support not just this year's charter school bill, but the one passed by my friend Representative Carney in 2017. Look, there are 44, I believe it's 44 other states in the District of Columbia that have charter schools. And we hear the sky is falling, that the world is coming to an end if we pass this. And that's just not the case, because that's not the case in other states. It's easy to point out bad actors, and that's done regularly. But there are a lot of success stories. And certainly, no one, even every charter school supporter, I can't find anybody in the legislature who doesn't see and believe in the importance of public schools. My brother is a teacher at Dixie. I wouldn't, you know, although I went to come into Catholic, my three brothers all went to Dixie, and they got quality educations. So it is a matter of giving parents choice, giving them options. Competition is a good thing. It works in higher education, and it, I believe, will work in the rest of the education sphere as well.
Mark Payne is Lincoln KY's Politics and Government Reporter. He spent the entire 2022 legislative session embedded in Frankfurt, living down there and getting to know our lawmakers well, and also covering important legislation for Northern Kentucky readers. And he has our next question for our candidates this evening. Mark? Don't forget to unmute yourself. That's strike one for you, Mark. We'll see how many I add up, too.
And will hopefully only be one tonight, Michael. But so the legislature passed House Bill 3, the omnibus abortion bill this session. Currently, there is a temporary injunction on the bill to prevent its implementation. The Supreme Court signaled via a leaked draft opinion that it would overturn Roe v. Wade, which would trigger the fetal heartbeat bill in Kentucky, effectively ending abortion in the state. Would each of you give your stance on abortion and your thoughts on both pieces of legislation? And I believe we are starting with Representative Koenig for that question.
Well, Mark, my stance on those pieces of legislation were pro because I was able to vote for them, as well as several other pieces of legislation. The six years the Republicans have held the majority in Frankfurt between the House and the Senate, was happy and proud to do so. And not just that, but this year we will have the ability to, by a constitutional amendment, vote on whether or not there is an inherent right to an abortion anywhere in the Kentucky Constitution. So, you know, and we had a, I mean, you talked about fetal heartbeat bill. We have a trigger law that if Roe v. Wade is overturned, then I believe we've become a abortion-free state. And that's why I've been endorsed by Kentucky Rights of Life. They see a 16-year record of supporting these issues, and I'm proud of it.
And Steve Doan, you have a minute for your answer.
Yeah, I'm also 100% anti-abortion, pro-life. I received the endorsement of Northern Kentucky rights of life. And, you know, I think that we've done a good job here in Kentucky, moving the needle to stop abortion, to be pro-life. And, you know, I'm really excited about the potential of this Supreme Court opinion coming out, which will trigger that law that Mr. Koenig was talking about, which would allow us to be a completely abortion-free state.
All right, moving on to our next question. We've been hearing a lot about infrastructure at the national level with the big bill that was adopted by Congress and signed into law by President Biden. And now we are starting to see some plans play out here in Kentucky. And the 69th District includes Dixie Highway, major thoroughfare in the region. Of course, the entire region is impacted by the Brent Spence Bridge, and there are a lot of other issues around the region. What I want to know from each of you is, if you are the 69th District Representative over the next two years, what do you still see as the biggest infrastructure challenges in the region? And what would you do to address them? We'll start this question with Steve Doan.
Yeah, so I'd probably live on what may be the busiest road in Erlanger, you know, Commonwealth Avenue. It's a direct corridor right to the interstate. It comes in and out of the heart of the city. I think probably specifically within the district, the biggest issues are, you know, Richardson Road, right? It's falling off the side of a hill, constantly have issues, accidents on that. You look at Turfway Road, right? There's more potholes on that road than I can count. And Houston and Dixie aren't too far off. So what we need to do going forward with infrastructure is we need to look at changing the funding mechanism for our roads. We need to make sure that we're having car counts so that we can actually get the proper funding and change those mechanisms down in Frankfurt. You know, with the gas tax not being passed this year, which I oppose increasing the gas tax, you know, we're going to need to find new creative solutions to fund roads. And I would see us cutting some government programs to make sure that we can get that happen.
Thank you, Steve. Adam Koenig, you have a minute for your answer.
Well, certainly, look, I was proud this year to get the money in for the rehabilitation and rebuilding of Stevenson Road. That should be completely let within the next two years, hopefully finished within three, to get it into some decent shape and the flooding issues that we deal with. And also, by hopefully, within a year, the rebuilding of and expansion of Houston Road to the old cinema property, which is obviously a huge economic development issue within Erlanger, as well as Florence. We've, and thank God, we have Sal Santoro in Southern Boone County, who writes the road plan now. When I first got elected 16 years ago, the most common thing I heard was, when are we going to start getting our fair share back from Frankfurt? Well, good news, we're not getting all of it back, but we are getting more money than we have ever seen come from Frankfurt. And that's thanks to Sal, myself, and the others in Northern Kentucky, Senator McDaniel, you know, running the NR in the Senate. So, but to get specifically to your question, obviously, the biggest issue is the Brent Spence Bridge. And we are on a path to do that with no tolls, but it's going to be a long slog. And it's going to go from, it's not just the bridge. It goes from, I think, back to Dixie Highway and Fort Mitchell, all the way up and three or four exits on 71 and 75 in Ohio. So it's going to be a long trek, and we need to make sure that's done properly.
You're watching live election coverage from Link NKY. I'm Michael Monks alongside Mark Payne. Tonight's forum is the Republican Candidates for State House District 69. Incumbent Republican State Representative Adam Koenig and his challenger Erlanger City Councilman Steve Doan. Full coverage of elections, campaigns, and races all across the three counties at Lincoln KY.com. We hope you got the new edition of the Link Reader in your mailbox, our print edition that comes out every two months. We have sample ballots in there for Boone, Kenton, and Campbell Counties so that you can be prepared when you go to the ballot box reminder to check out Lincoln KY.com or your local county clerk's website for details on when, where, and how to vote on May 17. And we'll have live coverage that night as well. I turn the floor back over to Mark Payne for our next question.
Starting on January 1st, 2023, the income tax will drop a half percent until it's slowly phased out. While the legislation will slowly rid the state of income tax, it widens the tax base in certain areas, such as adding a sales tax or a user fee for car rental services like Uber and digital services like Airbnb. Would each of you talk about your stance on income tax? And I believe we are starting with Representative Koenig on that one. One minute.
Yes, and I'm supportive of the direction we're going. I voted to lower the income tax in 2018 from 6% to 5%. And I voted for and co-sponsored this year's bill that puts us on the glide path to getting to the point where we ensure that we have enough revenue to do the things we need to do. We ensure that we have an appropriate amount of rainy day fund before we continue to lower the tax rate. But yes, January 1, we're going to go down to 4.5%. So that's a cut of 25% in everyone's income tax. And you just have to look at Florida, Texas, Tennessee, Tennessee especially, and see what a 0% income tax can do to your economic development. And I've always run as a pro-business Republican. We want jobs. We want people to be able to live the American dream with a good job. And we want people to be able to take care of themselves without having to live off of government. And this is one of the many things we've done in order to make that happen, and I'm fully supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. We'll turn now to Mr. Doan to answer that question. Steve, you have one minute.
Yeah, so I applaud our legislators for instituting a long-term plan, you know, for transitioning our state away from an income-based approach and towards a consumption-based approach. The biggest distinction probably between, you know, us and Tennessee, Florida, and Texas that were mentioned, is that they have great tourism. And, you know, our tourism just isn't what they have. So it's going to be really important for our legislators over the next few years to monitor the changes in our budget, to make sure that we're passing policies that are going to support increased tourism and expand the base of individuals that are coming to our state to make purchases. At the same time, we also need to be a watchdog on our tax dollars. We need to make sure we're not nickeling and diming our citizens and increasing taxes on services, you know, over the next 10 years in order to make up for budget loopholes. So while I'm very supportive of these transitions, we do need to monitor them. We do need to watch them and not just kind of let this thing go forward. We need to pay attention.
Thank you both for your answers to that question. Let's talk about cannabis. We've seen many states across the country legalize it, not just for medical use, but also recreational use. There have been proposals to both of those effects in Frankfurt in recent years. Nothing has moved too far forward yet. We've even heard Governor Andy Beshear talk about possible executive action on the medical cannabis front. What we ended up with after this session was a commission to further study cannabis. And that was pushed by Representative Kim Moser, a Republican of Taylor Mill. I'm sorry, there's a scene happening out on Madison Avenue here. It's always an adventure in downtown Covington, so it's a little loud right now. I want to know your position on cannabis, medical, recreational, and where you stand on that. And for this question, we will start with Councilman Doan. You have one minute.
I believe this is the first time Adam and I are going to disagree on something in this debate. I support medical marijuana here in the state. You know, having worked in Governor Bevins' office, I was the general counsel for the governor's office of agricultural policy. I actually got to sit in on the, on making sure that we had legal hemp. And I spent a lot of time with farmers around the state who believed that legalizing marijuana will have a net impact, a beneficial impact towards our state, not only for their jobs, for their lives, but also for people who have injuries, illnesses. So I'm a big supporter of, you know, medical cannabis. I would like to see the regulatory scheme come out where it's wide open, not like in Ohio, where I believe they have, you know, five companies that were approved charters. I'd like to see, you know, more small businesses, more of the CBD stores being able to get into that. Or, you know, they have to have a doctor's prescription for it. And then recreational, you know, over time, we could get to that, I think. If you're doing this just for tax revenue, we don't tax medicine. And so I wouldn't see why we would want to put a tax on medical marijuana. So if you're going to want tax revenue, you're going to need to legalize recreational. And that's kind of where I stand on that.
All right, Mr. Koenig, your thoughts?
Thanks, Michael. As I said on one of your programs earlier this year, we talked about this. I have not voted for medicinal marijuana, and here's why. I'm not a fan of the nanny state, but I also don't think that the legislature should be deciding what is and isn't medicine. That's what we have an FDA for. That's what we have a CDC for. And there is no other drug that you have just someone with no real experience or knowledge dispensing it and saying, take as much as you like. You know, here's different types, and this one might work better for this issue rather than that issue. It just seems like a terrible policy. I know it helps people. I have friends and supporters who say that it helps them, helps their children, helps their parents, and I get that. I honestly, I think I'm to the point where I would seriously consider recreational marijuana, in large part because I make arguments on expanded gaming, sports betting, casinos and whatnot. And it's hard to differentiate those arguments and not be willing to at least consider recreational marijuana.
These are the candidates for the Republican nomination in State House District 69. Adam Koenig is the incumbent State Representative for District 69. Adam Koenig is the incumbent State Representative for District sixty-nine. Challenger Stephen Doan is currently a city councilman in Erlanger. Mark Payne is Lincoln KY Politics and Government Reporter and has our next question. Mark?
I'm going to jump over to the Senate. And with Senate Bill one, which was sponsored by Northern Kentucky Senator John Chigle, a Republican from Union, it moves decision-making power in schools from site-based decision-making councils to superintendents. It would allow superintendents to make major school decisions on things such as teachers, curriculum, and textbooks. It also added language from Senate Bill one thirty-eight that requires schools to teach twenty-four documents recommended by the Ashbrook Center in Ohio. Would each of you talk about your stance on Senate Bill one with its added language from Senate Bill one thirty-eight?
And we'll start with Representative Koenig on that one, yeah.
Absolutely. So I voted yes on the bill with regards to the original Senate Bill one site-based council. I think it's going to be more effective for Northern Kentucky than perhaps some of the rural counties. But up here, and obviously this is who I represent, I heard from the superintendents who say, look, we've got school district, we got this district, it's a larger district like Boone County or Kenton County, and they've got kids coming from all these different schools with different programs and different curriculums being moved into junior highs and high schools. And they, they're all not on the same curriculum, and that has posed problems. You know, I trust the, I want to put more trust in the elected officials who put their neck out there and set the policy. And I've always had issues with them hiring this, the site-based councils hiring principals, not that they're not well-meaning and whatnot, but you know, when a principal and a school district, a school board member is, has to live up to the responsibilities and, and do the job, they should be able to hire the people that, that share their vision. So that's that part. And look, on the, on the CRT stuff, you take every member of the legislature to write their own bill, you get out a hundred and thirty-eight different bills. I think that was the most responsible of the bills I saw. And, and when it was added, I was perfectly comfortable with, with voting for it. And I think, I think Senator Wise did it in a responsible and thoughtful way.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Mr. Doan, you have a minute.
So I'm not a big fan of centralizing power or decisions in one person, but I am okay with, with the Senate Bill one. I think that, that allowing superintendent a broader range of decision-making authority is not a bad thing. Particularly here in this district, I think we've got some fantastic superintendents who can make those decisions. It does allow us a little bit more local control over what is going on in our school, and we can apply pressure to those people on, on our school boards that we need to make sure are doing the right things.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doan. And now I will ask my colleague Mark Payne to proceed with another question.
This is my last one for the evening, gentlemen, and it's going to be regarding COVID. The legislature ended the COVID state of emergency this session through Senate Joint Resolution one fifty. Opponents of the resolution said it would prevent Kentucky from being able to receive federal funds, and it will cut extended SNAP benefits this month. It's important to note that the state has received a financial windfall from federal funds during the COVID pandemic, such as the CARES Act from former President Trump and American Rescue Plan Act from President Biden. Would each of you, what would each of you have done different during the pandemic as a legislature? That was the question. Sorry, guys. What, what, what would you have done different during the pandemic as, as a legislator?
And we are starting
Is that a question to me?
Exactly. We start with Steve Doan for this one. Apologies, I think we had a little breakdown. There you go.
So if I had been in office during the COVID pandemics, I would have supported the Ron DeSantis CARES package. You know, I would have fought to make sure that our state stayed open, that we didn't go through lockdowns. You know, I left my job and I started my own law firm on January one, twenty twenty. And less than three months later, I was subject to a lockdown. And I didn't know if I would be able to make it, to be quite honest. You know, as an attorney, my income depends on the income of my clients. A lot of my clients are family law clients. So if they're not working, I'm not working. And these lockdowns did a lot to hurt small businesses. They hurt me. Meanwhile, the large businesses sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and all those other, you know, special corporate groups, they continue to grow in value. So if I had have been a legislature legislator at that time, I would have certainly fought to keep our state open and to make sure that people could keep their jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. Mr. Koenig, you have a minute.
Well, as they say, hindsight's twenty twenty. I think we, as a legislature, obviously, it hit right at the tail end of the twenty twenty legislature. And we did the best we could in passing what needed to be passed and getting out of town so as to not further spread. I mean, when everyone else is, is having to change their behaviors for us to continue would have been irresponsible. And, but that left us nine months unable to do anything and leaving the governor to his own devices. That's why we passed in early twenty twenty-one bills to start reforming that system where the executive orders last for thirty days. And this governor or any future governor needs to come to the legislature and ask for extension on those things. And it's, it really kind of shined a light on, on a, on an issue that needed to be changed. We, we had a constitutional amendment in order, that would allow us to call ourselves back into session when there are issues. So that the next time this happens, we're not stuck gone for nine months at a time. We can call ourselves back in to do what needs to be done, whether it's help a governor, stop a governor, whatever it may be. So I think we went about it in a responsible way. You know, it's easy to go back and, and say you could do things differently and, and fight something. And, you know, I mean, there was no DeSantis plan in twenty twenty. So, you know, I don't know how you, how you say that, but that's okay. You know, there's a lot of discussion either way, but the important thing is we put an end to it this year. And we have brained in the power of this governor and future governors.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. You are watching live coverage of primary election twenty twenty-two from Link NKY. I'm Michael Monks alongside Mark Payne. Our guests this evening are the Republican candidates in State House District sixty-nine, incumbent State Representative Adam Koenig, and challenger Erlanger City Councilman Steve Doan. And we will conclude our question session with this one from me, and it's really about politics more broadly, perhaps. I mean, we, you don't need me to tell you about the temperature of the nation and the rhetoric that we see as it relates to governance, government, politics. And we see it here locally as well as it plays out in local campaigns, and some might argue even in this one to some degree, though we haven't seen much of that this evening, thankfully. I want to know what role you see a lawmaker, say, a representative from House District sixty-nine. What role do you see yourself playing if you think it's necessary to help lower the temperature of political discourse, civic discourse in this country so that we might be able to better relate to one another again? And we'll start with Steve Doan with this one. You have a minute.
So, you know, I think that, that politics in its nature is confrontational. I think that when our founding fathers set up this system, they were attempting to allow us to have revolution without bloody conflict. That's why we have elections. We transition our government and we turn it over. Some people don't like that. Some people feel comfortable in their spots and they want to stay there forever. We've allowed our politicians too much power. We've given them too many benefits. The idea that a part-time legislator would get a pension is absolutely ridiculous. So I think that in order to tone down the rhetoric, to tone down the fights here in our nation and locally, we need to make significant changes to the amount of power, to the amount of control and the amount of authority that our legislators are given.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. We'll turn now to Mr. Koenig for one minute.
Uh, I think you saw a, a little bit of an example right there. I, I knocked on a gentleman's door a couple days ago, who was, lives very close to my opponent. And he wanted to know what we're doing to fight, because we got to fight. And, and, and I, and I understand his passion and I appreciate it. He watches Fox News, he sees Ron DeSantis doing all this stuff, and why aren't we doing it? And I very calmly explained to him, here's a lot of the things we've done. And, and I said, you know, look, I like to make policy. I'd like to do media interviews, but I don't seek them out. I don't scream and yell. And he said, well, you know, you need to scream and yell. That's what it takes. Say something obnoxious. And I literally looked him in the face and said, sir, if that's what you want, you need to vote for somebody else. I, I, I try to be straightforward. I, I try to be reasonable. I can be snarky in my private life, and I try to hold that in as much as I can. But, you know, I'm into making policy and I'm trying to make, trying to set a good example, whether it's my speeches on the House floor, whether it's debates like this, when it's knocking on doors and trying to have good conversations and reasonable conversations with individuals and on social media. I'm sure you can find examples of me probably not doing a good job of that. None of us are perfect, and I'm free to admit that, and I try to learn it, something every day. But I think the best thing I can do is set an example. And, and, you know, when I first, I know I'm probably going too long, but when I first ran sixteen years ago, people used to say, there's not a dime's worth of difference between the two parties. Nobody says that anymore. Everyone's got to hate the other side and throw things at the other side. And I don't think that's healthy, and this is just a pendulum swinging from one end to another. And I've tried to be consistent in the way I've acted the entire time.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. And now we will move into the closing remarks from each of the candidates. At the top of our program, we started with Representative Koenig. So here in the closing remarks, we'll start with, I meant if it's Representative Koenig at the, at the top of the show. So Councilman Doan, you will get the opportunity to go first here. I believe we said that you, you each had a minute. We do have some extra time if you want to use that. Here, we can, we can give you a couple of minutes if you'd like them. Councilman Doan, the floor is yours.
In, in closing, I feel that our district is ready for change. I feel that our leaders in this district are ready for change. I've been endorsed by Congressman Thomas Massey. I've been endorsed by Mayor Jessica Fettie, Tyson Hermes, Gary Meyer, Ryan Almore, Steve Knitter, Kathy Flack. These are local elected officials. I was appointed to Erlanger City Council by local elected officials. They saw something, they saw a leader. I think it's time that we have a leader in this district. I think it's time that we have someone that will fight for the people of this district when they go down to Frankfurt. Ultimately, government makes decisions with effects for life. And if you're not willing to fight for people's lives, you have no business serving in this state legislature. So on May seventeenth, I would ask for your vote. If you'd like more information, please feel free to reach out to me personally, or you can visit my website, doanforky.com.
Thank you, Steve Doan. Representative Adam Koenig, your closing remarks.
Thank you, Michael. I have been a leader in this community for literally decades because the people entrusted me with positions where I can try to improve life in Northern Kentucky. And now I get to do that, not just for Kentucky, or not just for Northern Kentucky, but Kentucky as a whole. And I don't think there's anyone, and I can go through a list of endorsements of Northern Kentucky elected officials. And, but I, I've been honored with the elected officials I serve in other parts of the state who are willing to drive up here and knock on doors with me because they know that I am a leader in Frankfurt. And given my position as Chairman of House Licensing Occupations and Administrative Regulations, I've been fortunate enough to have an outsized ability to make more things happen and have a bigger seat at the table for Northern Kentucky and for the sixty-ninth district. The other thing I heard, I talked earlier about how we did get our, our, our fair share when I first ran for this. That was number one thing I heard. Number two, I think I heard was, when are we going to get a casino? Well, I was instrumental in getting that bill through the House. It was a Senate bill, and I carried it in the House to, on historical horse racing, and we're going to see that at Turfway. I'm the leader on sports betting. I'm the leader on allowing you to direct ship alcohol straight to your house, which is something that for years people have been shipping wine to Indiana and Ohio and sending their tax dollars there. If you look at the support I've received in elections, people know I'm a leader. People know that I listen to them. And I think if you were to talk to people in Frankfurt, they'd say that there's no one who works harder in Frankfurt than myself. And I would love the honor to do that for another two years for you, the citizens of the sixty-ninth district.
Gentlemen, thank you both. You've been watching live election coverage from Linkin KY. Linkin KY dot com is your home for full coverage of the primary election in twenty twenty-two. We have articles about every race taking place across the three counties. And we also have opinion editorials submitted by the candidates so that they can explain in their own words why they are seeking their local offices. And coming up on Tuesday, May seventeen, primary night, we will have live coverage of the results as they come in from right here in the studio and also reporters on the ground in all three courthouses. We hope you'll tune in. Mark Payne is Lincoln KY Politics and Government Reporter, and he will be part of that coverage alongside me. My thanks this evening to State Representative Adam Koenig and Erlanger City Councilman Steve Doan for coming on to talk and to answer these questions for voters, not just in the sixty-ninth district, but all across Northern Kentucky. Thanks to both of you for being with us, and good luck to both of you on primary night.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And we will be back again on Thursday evening with the candidates for the Newport City Commission. A big field this year in Newport. We hope to see you then. Thanks for watching this evening.